Get started with the regular board meeting tonight. This October 6, 2016, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Sandberg Middle School Corelettes under the direction of Jean Crowley.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose fresh stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the ramors we washed, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was a beautiful job. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight. Well done. So, Madam Clerk, we have already certified the closed-meeting compliance. And next, we will go to announcements, a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to receive a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I call on Ms. Chu for announcements.
Thank you, Chair. The Board will be recognizing many special occasions this month. I now apologize if my voice gets hoarse, I'm a little sick. October is National Dyslexia Awareness Month. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that results in people having difficulties learning to read, spell, write, and pronounce words. Recognizing the markers of dyslexia and intervening early helps to provide opportunities for future success. Over the next several months, the Office of Special Education Instruction, in collaboration with Instructional Services, will be offering several opportunities to help raise awareness about dyslexia. On Friday, October 21, the Parent Resource Center will host a Dyslexia Open House from 10:00 to 1:00. On December 7, January 11, and January 25, there will be additional workshops about dyslexia at the Parent Resource Center. These workshops will highlight strategies to support reading, writing, and math at home, and strategies to work with schools to support students with dyslexia. Please check our FCPS website to find additional resources, including Clues to Dyslexia, which highlights both the strengths and difficulties students with dyslexia exhibit at each stage in their education. The School Board will formally recognize National Dyslexia Awareness Month this month. In addition, this month, from October 10th to 14th, is National School Lunch Week. Using the theme "Show Your Spirit," National School Lunch Week promotes excitement about the benefits of students consuming wholesome, healthy school lunches of fresh fruits and veggies, whole grains, and milk. The 2016 event will encourage school food professionals to use social media to spread the word about healthy school lunches. The National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children and has joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There is a continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness for the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hopes of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. In addition, from October 9th through 15th, the School Board will be recognizing Teen Read Week. Teen Read Week encourages teens to go beyond the traditional book and explore poetry, audiobooks, books about music, and more at their school and local library. The 2016 theme, "Read for the Fun of It," encourages teens to escape their daily routines and pick up something fun to read: fantasy novels, science fiction, beach reads, travel books, or tales of adventure. Teen Read Week has been observed since 1998 in an effort to engage teens in reading for pleasure and fun and to use the services at the libraries. Research shows that teens who read for fun have better test scores and are more likely to succeed in the workforce. The School Board encourages all FCPS teenage students to take advantage of their resources in their school and public library and to become lifelong readers and learners. Finally, from October 2nd to 8th, we will be celebrating Mental Health Awareness Week. The National Alliance on Mental Health Illness, or NAMI, and participants across the country are raising awareness of mental illness during Mental Illness Awareness Week, which is from October 2nd to 8th. Each year, this organization works to fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal care. NAMI believes that mental illness issues are important to address year-round, but highlighting these issues during this week provides a time for people to come together and display the passion and strength of those working to improve the lives of the tens of millions of Americans affected by mental illness. This year's theme is "I Am Stigma-Free." Being stigma-free means learning about and educating others on mental illness, focusing on connecting with people to see each other as individuals and not a diagnosis, and most importantly, taking action on mental health issues. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We turn to item 1.04. I call on Mr. Palchuk.
Yes, it is my honor to recognize our National School Bus Safety Week. As we've been back at school now for about a month in the community, I'm sure we've realized that we have many of our big yellow school buses out there. These buses and our bus drivers are the first contacts for many of our students as they head back to school, especially our little kindergartners and our new students. Our bus drivers and their fabulous team help keep our students safe each and every day. It is also all of our jobs to help ensure that they are safe, so please remember to follow the laws, be courteous, and be respectful and patient when school buses are picking up or dropping off children. With that being said, I would like to announce that October 17th to 21st will be National School Bus Safety Week. It has been designated as a Safety Week based on the theme "Be Smart, Be Seen, I Wait in a Safe Place." The week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County, who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student drivers. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 141,000 students and over 1,600 school buses on more than 6,500 routes, traveling nearly 17 million operational miles each and every year. It is a great honor and privilege to invite the staff from our facilities and transportation. This will be our very first photo at the remodeled dais, so I will hand this over to our photographer to please direct us for our photo. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we probably only had a handful of some of our transportation staff here tonight. You know they get up at very, very early hours in the morning to transport our students, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, but we appreciate them very, very much. And if anyone from, any bus driver, anyone from staff is here, please join us for a photo. Thank you. All right, well, thank you for everybody's patience while we did that for the first time in our new configuration. We turn to item 2.01, Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, or boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak with us tonight. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the Board, and I'm going to call the first three names, so the two following can be prepared. We start with Monique Barudy, followed by Bethany Cosma, and to be followed by Beatrice Berry. Ms. Barudy?
I don't, no, no, it is. I'm good. I created a video for this meeting, but you chose to censor it. By doing so, you prove my point. You say you value public engagement, and yet you refuse to engage the public on the topic of gender identity. My video clip started, my video started with a clip from May of 2015, the meeting during which Policy 1450 was passed, there were the changes to it were passed. There was a room full of people begging to be heard, since you passed this policy without a single public forum, just weeks after it was brought up as new business. 10 people get to address this Board every two weeks for an incremental time period of three minutes on a topic of your choosing. And even then, you decide if it addresses the topic closely enough for your tastes. There's no discussion, no acknowledgement, no exchange of ideas. My next clip shows Mrs. Schultz recognizing the fact that this topic generated more spontaneous public discourse and commentary than any other in the history of FCPS, and yet you didn't choose to give any of them a voice. My next clip showed Ms. Patty Reed also commenting on the hundreds and hundreds of emails she had received. She said, and I quote, "The process used to pass this policy was troubling and embarrassing." The No Change Memo on the Agenda tonight exists because of a Virginia state code that requires this Board to review and update each one of its policies at least every five years. Policy 2601, the Student Rights and Responsibilities, which was also updated to include general identity language, is part of that No Change Memo. I am trying to make the case that it shouldn't be. Another section of that same Virginia code states that each local school board should ensure that policies are developed, giving consideration to the views of teachers, parents, and other citizens. Have you truly given consideration to the views of concerned citizens, or are you just pushing your own agenda? My next clip shows Ms. McLaughlin at the end of the last meeting saying, "It is concerning to me that we have citizens who are concerned that this Board has been tone deaf. I do believe that this Board continues to honor its very important commitment to being engaged with our public. Words without action are simply that, empty words. If this Board is truly committed to public engagement, prove it. Plan a town hall or a public forum. Create a task force. Take a survey. This Board has taken on controversial issues in the past and has shown a commitment to making informed decisions about later high school start times, half-day Mondays, with years of public forums and studies. Even the post-Labor Day start warranted a survey of FCPS. Why do you refuse to make informed decisions and engage the public on this issue? I again urge you to repeal the changes to Policy 1450 and the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and start down a path of true community engagement for all of your stakeholders." Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cosma, to be followed by Beatrice Berry.
Good evening. My name is Bethany Cosma, and tonight I come to speak about suicide prevention. The most important advocates for students who are in danger of suicide, with very few exceptions, are parents. I learned firsthand many years ago that keeping silent does not help anyone. In fact, it does the opposite. Back in high school, as a predator's victim, I kept silent. Had I spoken up, perhaps I would have helped prevent that predator from sexually assaulting again. At the time, like most female victims, I felt that it somehow was my fault. It wasn't. For some victims of rape and sexual assault, depression and thoughts of or attempted suicide to remove the pain are real. Although I told some of my peers, I simply desperately wanted to forget about it. I tried to forget about it. I thought I could contain it. I was wrong. Predators, even high school boys, will not stop with one victim, especially if they realize they can get away with it without any consequences. Only a few years later, sadly, this same predator victimized another girl I knew very well, and since then, I vowed never to keep quiet again. Now, as a Fairfax County resident, mother, and advocate, I will not be silenced. I must stand up for not only my daughters, but other girls. As a majority of you elected School Board members are fellow women, I'm sure that my story should resonate with you, at least one or two of you. Statistically speaking, one in six women are victims of rape and sexual assault, and males dominate the sex-related crime statistics. You may have heard of the horrible stories of young girls committing suicide after indecent photos were posted on the Internet. Imagine how predators will be emboldened and enabled in endangering other young girls if they are allowed to enter girls' facilities and be protected under your current policy. Although Policy 1450 seems innocuous, its repercussions are far-reaching. I ask you to put yourselves in the shoes of our Fairfax County women and girls. Do you want a boy or man to see or photograph you undressing, or worse, naked, in one of the bathroom or locker rooms? No one should be bullied or belittled. Yet what about those women and girls who are being sexually victimized or feel discriminated against because they have no safe place? Sadly, all are ill-served by Policy 1450 and the nondiscrimination clause. So why are you enabling the real threats of sexual assault to over 90,000 girls in Fairfax? Why are you allowing and promoting predators to hide under transgender protections invoked by subjective feelings instead of biological facts? You are in charge with, you are charged with ensuring the safety of all students. How can anyone think that a policy allowing biological boys into biological girls' facilities and vice versa is promoting safety? Plainly and simply, it's a recipe for victimization of women and girls, and worse, preventable suicides. I implore you to listen to the parents who are concerned for the safety and security of all children and involve us in the suicide prevention plan. Please repeal Policy 1450 and protect our children.
Next call on Beatrice Berry, to be followed by Ella Scuo, to be followed by John Colt Koetschka.
My name's Beatrice Berry. I have two girls attending Fairfax County Public Schools. I'd like to start my three minutes by sending our most sincere and heartfelt condolences to Tom and Mindy Woros, whose son Connor took his own life this past weekend. Connor was a junior at Hayfield High School. Suicide is a very shocking event. For some parents, their teens suffer silently, with anxiety, depression, mood disorders, bullying, and parents never know. Some parents, like me, know fully well that their child suffers with great anxiety and has suicidal thoughts. My daughter Ella suffers from severe anxiety and learning disabilities, and at times, she's crippled by her worries. Ella was in first grade when she began having panic attacks at school. I was called immediately to remove her because she was disrupting the other children in the classroom. And I gave kudos to the school for recognizing the person that could help her the most was her parent, not a school psychologist or a counselor, but her parent. Ella is seen as different by the other children because she isn't in all their classes. Sometimes her anxiety increases and she uses coping mechanisms or has to leave the classroom to deal with her anxiety, and this calls attention to her. I imagine that the children who suffer from gender identity issues and confusion can feel like Ella does every day, that some may suffer from great anxiety, maybe even depression, because of the confusion they experience, and I believe in the fundamental dignity of each person, each human being, and that they all have rights. All of us have the right to feel safe and comfortable, accepted and loved. Your family is where you gain your identity and the knowledge of who you are. Fairfax County Public Schools, your Board, say that you foster a culture of caring and that families play a fundamental role in a children's education, but I don't believe that you embody these values when you ask my daughters to share their bathrooms and locker rooms with boys. Did you take into consideration my child, who has special needs, who now has high stress and massive anxiety over the prospect of sharing her bathroom with a boy? Do the parents of these children want them to endure more stress and anxiety, making the choice to allow them to use an opposite-sex bathroom? When one of these children ends up thinking that they can't handle it anymore, when he or she takes their own life because of this stress or anxiety, who will bear the burden of this blame? Will it be you? I'm asking that the decision be based on every child's dignity and rights, not only those who claim alienation. Every child deserves to feel safe in their school and in every school activity that they attend. Parents, or as you call us, stakeholders, are paramount in the decision-making process, and the school should not override it, thinking that they know best. If my child has to share a bathroom with a boy, I should be informed. If my child has to be in a room on a school-sponsored event with a boy, I should be informed. I, the parent, will then make the proper decision for my child. Practice what you preach, School Board, and make an environment where I quote, "Everyone thrives in a vibrant, healthy, safe, enriching, and respectful environment. My children deserve to thrive as well and feel safe and respected. The decisions you have made behind closed doors, with little biased stakeholder input, is unfair and treads on my children's rights. I say shame on you, School Board members, and I pray no parent has to stand up here to tell you that your misguided decisions caused the death of their child. I ask you to repeal."
Ella Scuo, to be followed by John Koetschka, to be followed by Vanessa Pointer. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here today to talk about suicide prevention. Roughly 90% of rapes are committed to females by males, with one in six females suffering sexual assault. So why is the School Board creating a hostile learning environment by allowing males into females' locker rooms and bathrooms? Based on national statistics, there is a relatively large group of sexual assault survivors, and roughly 7,000 young girls in Fairfax County schools are survivors. They carry trauma, they have severe distress, and roughly 1,000 of these girls may contemplate suicide, with hundreds already attempting suicide. So I want to hear about your suicide prevention for them. Many other survivors, they live in fear, silence, and distress, and your policy can further entrench their fear, silence, and distress. And your policy is also sending out a strong message to these girls that they do not matter. And your policy is also somehow slapping their bruised faces, that to feel fear and anxiety about males in their bathroom is somewhat bigotry and wrong, and your policy is instead forcing them to live with it and be content with whatever the cost, whatever the depression, and whatever the intense suffering. So I want to hear your suicide prevention. Survivors of sexual assaults are not political activists. They often live in shame, guilt, and depression. They need our help to pull them back to life, not push them over the cliff. So why is the Board trying to torment these girls with a harmful and controversial experiment that is not backed up by science, that has never been implemented anywhere on its own accord throughout 8,000 years of written human history? So I want to hear your suicide prevention. Again, one in six females suffered sexual assault. So where is your human empathy for a plight of suffering of this relatively large group? The simple solution to their suffering, their depression, and their problem is to repeal Policy 1450 right now. Thank you.
John Koetschka, to be followed by Vanessa Pointer.
I am John Weston-Koetschka. I yield my time to Nene Camara.
Good evening to you all. My name is Nene Camara. I'm so honored to be here this evening to talk about suicide prevention and sex education. I work very hard to support my family. I work 16 hours a day most of the time, but at least I find it important for me to be here, for my voice to be heard. In most cases, I understand that maybe parents' voices are not heard all the time, and they are not included when making decisions. And as a parent of the Fairfax County School, I'm interested in this topic. Most of the kids suffering from suicide, they are kids who thought their voices are not heard when they suffer traumatic experience. And it is the responsibility of us, as parents, and you, as important personnel here, present in this evening program, to help the situation, to prevent short mishaps from not happening again. I have a daughter who is in the sixth grade, who is 11 years old, and as an elementary student, I will be, I'm pleading that sex education should not be introduced in the elementary school for some of the reasons I'm going to give. When we came to the Fairfax County, I came because I understand they have the best schools, and I'll be proud for my daughter to be in the Fairfax County. And based on that, sex is really nice to be educated to students, but I want to believe that it's not for elementary. Because when you look at the elementary school, most of the kids in the elementary school are below 13 years old. They are kids. They should be treated as kids. They should not be treated as youths or adults. So educating them about sex, I thought it gives them a negative emotional impact, giving them more responsibility to think of making good them more responsibility to think of making good and bad choices. As an African American from West Africa, my culture and religion and the values I practice does not permit my daughter to be taught sex education in school at the tender age. As an African American, in my culture, we see that kids below the age of thirteen should be treated as kids. You can teach them about family life education.
Excuse me, could you please wrap up? Your three minutes are over.
Okay. You can teach them about sex education, family life education, but there are limitations to that. You can't go beyond because of the negative impact it creates most times on kids. So for me, my daughter, I will get him out by not maybe signing any documents coming from the school for sex education, because I would not want him to be given a lot of responsibility. But for those parents who don't know what really is in the classes, I'm really concerned. And I'm pleading and kindly requesting to you, important people, who I thought would be able to help us.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
And would you please provide the clerk with your name, so she will have it, since you filled in for somebody else who was on here. Thank you so much. Vanessa Pointer, to be followed by Huena Gao.
Good evening, board members, Representative Chu, Chairwoman Evans, Superintendent Carza, faculty and staff, neighbors and friends. First, a kind thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share a few of my thoughts. I count it a privilege to have grown up and spent the entirety of my K through twelve years within the Fairfax County Public School System. In fact, I'm a little nostalgic standing here and looking at the stage on which I performed as a middle schooler here at Luther Jackson. But currently, the CDC maintains that suicide among adolescent teens is the second-leading cause of death in the fifteen to twenty-four-year-old age bracket. Suicide among our nation's youth is real, and it is a terrible, terrible thing. I understand the dire need that we, as a school system, community and culture, need to pay attention to with regard to social and emotional well-being and youth mental health. That said, I certainly support a policy that aids the school system in implementing a strong prevention and risk assessment program for its teachers and its students. However, I am concerned about the manner in which the board intends to do so with regard to parent rights. I am not yet a parent. I'm a master's level early childhood development clinical professional, as well as a certified specialist in early intervention. I spend most of my time working with young children, but a lot of my efforts are spent behind the scenes advocating for and cheering for parents. I discovered that the Code of Virginia only requires parents to be notified if their adolescent teen communicates directly with the staff member when suicide is imminent. However, parents also have the right to know if their child is being identified or monitored. They have the right to know if their child is being screened, and they have the right to know when their child is being assessed. And it frightens me that these are missing pieces in your guidelines. I just hope that our parents are involved early in this process and their rights are not steamrolled, as seen with such policies like fourteen fifty. Additionally, this is a concern because suicide prevention begins with a family life that is safe, secure and stable. And in recent discussions of family life education, the policymaking power with which the board has been entrusted appears abused. The haste in which it was written and discussed, the fact that there was hardly a quote advisory committee with broad community representation, as stated on the FCPS website, and the oversight of parents' rights when writing and implementing these policies. These are all indications that the board may be violating the authority in the eyes of its community, and I fear that this new policy may only continue that trend. Our children, your fellow students, your sons and daughters, all deserve our strongest support, and such strength comes from an honest, thriving school community and the active involvement of their parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now call on Huena Gao, to be followed by Patrina Mosley and Bonnie Burkhart. Is Gao?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Huena Gao, and I have two children in Fairfax County Schools. First of all, I would like to thank, you know, the school board for creating a nurturing environment for my children to grow. And second, I'm speaking tonight because I want to voice some concerns related to the overall well-being of students regarding the forthcoming regulations implementing gender identity addition to the nondiscrimination policy and the students' rights and the responsibilities, which strangely is being approved tonight with the claim of no change, when it clearly has changed and appears to be violating the state law. I was here a few months ago and listening to the testimony given by parents of transgender students. I was touched. No student should be subject to harassment, bullying or denial of educational opportunities. But when it comes to school regulations, we need to set emotion aside and methodically scrutinize them from legal, logical and a system-wise perspective. I'm deeply concerned over the implications and consequences in the regulatory changes that are set to come. I have to say that I do not feel comfortable to have my children placed in a bathroom or locker room with anyone of their opposite biological gender, for the concerns of my children's safety and privacy, as well as the modesty that is ingrained in our culture. A single-use facility can be provided for them, but this policy will subject my children to the same discrimination and exclusion that school board forbids to be done to gender dysphoric students. As I have said, no student should be subject to harassment or bullying regardless of their height, their weight, their look, and their struggle with issues related to gender dysphoria. I'm speaking this from the bottom of my heart, because when I grew up, I used to be teased by my classmates simply because I sweat a lot. I was called smelly skunk. It was such, if I was such a girl now in Fairfax County, may I request the school to reduce the room temperature by five degrees so that I wouldn't sweat at all and wouldn't become the target of the bully? However, the important thing is, I don't believe school's inability of providing such accommodation has anything to do with lack of inclusion. Maybe the key to tackle the smelly skunk situation is not the room temperature itself, but more of the understanding of the body, human body differences, and emphasis on students' character education, and providing more consulting service for children with special needs. Dear school board members, you are in charge of developing school regulations. I'm imploring each of you, please do not create more problems by precipitating a flawed implementation. Let's decompose issues rather than compounding them. Let's do not make a well-intentioned policy become an ill-constructed nightmare. Let's try our best to call for mutual understanding and respect. Call for the consciousness of not gobbling the liquor to quench the thirst.
Patrina Mosley, to be followed by Bonnie Burkhart. Is Patrina Mosley here? All right, Bonnie Burkhart?
I'm here to address the topic of suicide prevention with stories of three children that I know. The eighth grade FLE teaches about anal sex. Anal sex is not the normal means by which one couple enjoys intimacy or by which you make a baby. However, anal sex is the primary method by which one guy rapes another guy. I knew an eighth-grade boy who was raped by a slightly older high schooler. Afterwards, he cried to his mother, "I didn't know you could do that to a guy." Obviously, he did not have the Fairfax County FLE lesson on that topic. Let's say he did have that FLE lesson after he was raped. The other guys in the class would say, "Wow, I didn't know you could do that to a guy." And their eyes would light up, they'd get smiles on their faces, and the boy who was raped would stare at their excited faces in absolute horror. After much parental support and counseling, he started his sophomore year by committing suicide. Over ninety percent of the rape victims are girls. A friend of mine was a victim of incest by her father. Her brother learned by example and then also started to rape her. She became pregnant with her brother's child, had a miscarriage alone in the barn, and buried the dead fetus in a haystack so no one would know. School was her only sanctuary away from the horrors of home. How would she feel then if a transgender guy showed up in her school bathroom or locker room? Her brother could just claim to be transgender in order to follow his rape victim into the school bathroom and terrorize her twenty-four-seven. She's now over sixty years old and still suffers from bulimia and anorexia, which I categorize as a slow form of suicide. Another of my classmates became an incest victim around fifth grade. It's not something fifth-grade girls talk about, so I don't have a lot of details. Her older sisters apparently then started her on illegal drugs in order to cope, for that is how they cope with their father. Drug overdoses are also a slow form of suicide in my book. If you want to prevent suicides, keep the schools as a sanctuary for these children, for children like these attend Fairfax County Schools. Provide them someone to confide in and who can help them. Now, picture a woman holding her baby boy in her lap, screaming, as she tries to piece together the bloody fragments of his skull in a feeble attempt to see him one last time. Out of one side of your mouth, you talk about suicide prevention, while the other side of the mouth, you promote teaching anal sex and other rape techniques in school. For what harm could that possibly cause? You decide.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paula Karpie. I was teaching for thirty-three and a half years as a special ed teacher before I retired from Fairfax County. Thirty-one of those years have been in Fairfax County. Following retirement, I have been subbing on a daily basis or long-term. The board needs to understand that all retired teachers are certified in their content areas. Most of us have a master's degree or two. Some of us even have a PhD. By hiring a Fairfax County retiree, you're already getting a bargain in the classroom because you have hired a pro. When retirees are in the classroom, you're getting a professional. We already have the experience in the classroom, know how to deal with inappropriate behaviors and know Fairfax County Public Schools policies and procedures. As they say, been there, done that. In all the years I have been teaching, I have never seen a group of employees treated this badly. We were told in June that our pay was going to be cut thirty-three percent. All subs would receive fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents an hour. In July, we were informed that our pay is still cut but was increased by a dollar ten cents an hour. Fairfax County retirees will receive fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Was this a coincidence, since DC's minimum wage was increased to fifty dollars an hour? How degrading for the retired Fairfax County teacher who chooses to sub and now faces a thirty-four percent pay cut from twenty-two dollars and twenty cents an hour to fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents an hour. Not to slight the regular subs who come in and do a good job, but retirees are the subs with many, many years of experience in the classroom. We have the knowledge of the subject matter and the ability to execute a plan and improvise if it is necessary. Even when we sub out of our discipline, we have decades of classroom savvy that makes us much more able to actually engage the student in their curriculum. Several times when I have subbed, there were no lesson plans left by the classroom teacher or the plans were minimal. I had to use my many years of experience in the classroom to be creative and resourceful and to spontaneously generate a learning experience for the thirty students for the seven and a half hours. Could a less experienced sub, one with only sixty credits or a non-teacher, have done that? By eliminating retiree track, the county is totally insulting us. By cutting retiree pay, you have lumped us in the same category as those with only sixty credits. Even the county school bus drivers are paid more, eighteen eighty-two an hour. If you had asked the teachers in the classroom, the retiree's salary would have not been decimated. You would have increased it in order to keep the experienced pool of retirees. Does the county assume that retirees will continue to come in to sub for only fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents? Most importantly, will those retirees come in and sub long-term for twenty-one ninety-one an hour? I have done long-term subs approximately ten times for... Whoa!
It does come up fast, doesn't it, Ms. Karpie?
It does. Can I just say one more thing?
If you could just wrap up, that would be fine. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay. Nobody gets it right, but that's okay. I just wanted to say, by the way, my dog walkers charge fifteen dollars a visit, which constitutes a twenty-minute walk. When they walk three dogs in my neighborhood, they make forty-five dollars an hour. It's a lot more than the retired Fairfax County teacher, and they don't even have a degree. Thank you.
Thank you. We now turn to item two point zero two, Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Ms. Honorable Chair. And first, I'd just like to thank all of our speakers for coming today to speak about these difficult issues. Every time I follow citizen participation, I have a hard time because everything you say still rings in my head. So I'd just like to thank you for coming tonight. On Friday, two Fridays ago, actually, I had the great fortune of attending the Talk for Peace event at Groveton Elementary School, and I was absolutely blown away by the powerful effects of the event. The sidewalks around the school were completely covered in images of peace and kindness and what it means to be a good citizen. And I'd just like to thank the Groveton staff, teachers and students for committing to the caring culture and the governance that our county has been supporting. So thank you, Groveton, for continuing this. Groveton has been a part of Fairfax County's one hundred schools in supporting Talk for Peace, and again, just beginning to know this organization and its founder have been a great experience. So thank you. In addition, on September twenty-sixth, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council had its first meeting, at which we discussed the three topics of mental health, including suicide prevention, the school environment, including topics such as bullying and harassment, and in general, student balance and wellness. These three topics have been very carefully structured to encompass the topics on this year's agenda, and many of our students had very strong opinions, of which I will be including in future meetings. This year, I am making it my mission to visit all the high school and secondary schools across our county, my first visit of which happened already. I was able to meet Chantilly High School, a lot of the journalism students who have come to know their community, and I was able to explore the wonderful career and technical education opportunities. So I just wanted to recognize Chantilly High School for its wonderful education and the support of its students. In addition, one of the pillars of the school diversity I came to see is extremely well-represented and cherished by its own students. There are a handful of transgender students across that community, across my own community, and I've seen wonderful case-by-case bases upon which administration are able to care for such students and maintain a caring culture within their community. I will still be making many more school visits throughout my time, but I would just like to take note that thus far, I've seen students take it upon themselves to create the caring culture. They don't react to the change in legislation as something that they need to research into or something that need to look into statistics to understand. They adapt to the twenty-first century's change and the social changes that we're experiencing, and I just very much love the community there. In addition, as Mental Health Awareness Week is upon us, and as I see many citizens are very passionate about suicide prevention and awareness, I'd like to encourage both parents and students to attend the Mental Health and Wellness Conference at Fairfax High School on October twenty-ninth. At this conference, there will be a very well-known forum speaker who will be discussing these issues. And finally, as I mentioned at last time's meeting, the twenty-sixteen to twenty-seventeen Student Leadership Development Program, as well as the application for the Fairfax County Student Human Rights Commission are both open. So for any students who are interested in leadership opportunities in our county, I very much encourage you to go online and check out these applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Turn to item three point zero one, Confirmation of Actions Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action regarding, taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed the individual case, and at this time will make the motion to confirm the recommended action. I call on Mrs. Schultz for the motion.
I move to grant the school's reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious crime related to an incident that occurred in the community and modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Turn to three point zero two, Appointment of Interim Superintendent. I call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to appoint Dr. Steve Lockard as acting division superintendent on an interim basis, according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session and effective on the last day of employment of the current division superintendent, while the school board conducts- day of employment of the current division superintendent while the school board conducts its search for and until it appoints a new superintendent.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Steve Lockard is a skilled collaborative administrator who understands how our school district works. He's a champion for students and ensures that student achievement is at the forefront of everything we do. And the board is very grateful that he has agreed to lead our school system while we search for a new superintendent. Dr. Lockard joined FCPS as deputy superintendent in May of 2014. Previously, he was deputy superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools in Maryland. He's also been an associate superintendent for elementary schools, and then in his distant past, he was a director, a principal, an assistant principal, and most important of all, a teacher. He's also a father of three kids. That also counts. The board is fortunate to have someone with his expertise and vision, and we sincerely look forward to our interim, well, we don't look forward to the interim situation that we're going through, but as we find ourselves in this position, we are very grateful that Dr. Lockard will help us through this transition period. And fortunately, Dr. Lockard will not be alone. We have a very strong team, and we are very grateful. Many of the people sitting here are representative of that strong team. And we're also grateful for Karen, for your appointing of many. We have many new folks sitting over here as well as many seasoned people, so that our cabinet and our leadership team are very strong. So while we go through the search, we are going through the search in a period of strength. So thank you very much, Dr. Garza, for setting us in this situation. And again, the school board is very grateful to you, Dr. Lockard, for agreeing to become our interim superintendent, and we shall all work very hard together, all of us, the school board, our student representative, our team, all of our teachers and our principals. So we will begin this adventure again. So thank you, Dr. Lockard.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Dr. Lockard over the past ten months in my role as a new school board member, and I have been consistently impressed by the leadership skills that he has demonstrated, as well as he's a proven consensus builder, collaborator, and thoughtful listener with a very deliberate management style that I think will be important as he has a steady hand on the till as we go forward. And certainly, he represents the best of Dr. Garza's ability of identifying and cultivating top talent. So I'm very excited about this appointment.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, I'm just going to say this. Not only do I fully agree with the wonderful words of support for Dr. Lockard, but quite frankly, all twelve of us could be here for a good several hours if we really wanted to extol not only our confidence and our trust in Dr. Lockard, but also our appreciation for Dr. Garza in assembling such a highly capable leadership team. But in fairness to the work that we do have in front of us, which is another closed session after this business meeting, I will just briefly say, Dr. Lockard, that it's been a true pleasure getting to work with you these past two and a half years. And while we really wish we weren't needing to call upon you for this, we also recognize that you are going to truly help us continue the great work that Dr. Garza has put in motion these past three years. And I know that's what has me most excited about this chance to work with you in a new position. So thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, it's great to be able to go out to the community with confidence that we'll be in very good hands as we do the unthinkable and replace Dr. Garza. But I just want, for the sake of the community, I don't know if this is clear, even though we are voting on this tonight, Mr. Lockard, Dr. Lockard does not begin his term as interim tonight. That will come later as we get closer to the unfortunate departure of Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. And before calling for the vote, I'll just say briefly that as sorry as I am that Dr. Garza is leaving us, I am very much looking forward to continuing to work with Dr. Lockard. When Dr. Garza does move on, I know the two of you will collaborate over the next weeks to make a smooth transition for that time. And I know Dr. Garza has left us in very strong shape, and Dr. Lockard has a great team to work with as well. So I'm going to call for the vote, and, Dr. Lockard, I'm going to give you a little bit of time, a little extra time, if you would like to come up to the podium after the vote. With that, all those in favor of, let's see if I'm supposed to reread the motion here, I believe. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Steve Lockard as acting division superintendent on an interim basis according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session and effective on the last day of employment of the current division superintendent while the school board conducts its search for and until it appoints a new superintendent. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous.
Thank you, Chairman Evans, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. First, I want to start by saying thank you, Dr. Garza, for the opportunity you provided for me to come here to Fairfax County Public Schools, the incredible learning I've gained in my time working with you, and for all that you've done for the students, staff, and community of FCPS. I am sorry to see you leave us, but I know that I'm better for the opportunity and thankful for the experience of serving on your leadership team. So thank you very much. Certainly, thank you to our school board for your support and confidence. I am truly humbled and honored by the challenge and responsibility in front of me. You have my commitment and my word that you'll get everything I have during this time as interim superintendent in continuing the important work that the board, Dr. Garza, and the entire FCPS community has begun. I'm committed to working with our school board, our local and state leaders, our parents, our students, our community, our school division staff, as we continue to be responsive to needs, open to improvements, and continually strive to best serve our students and support their achievement. I'll continue to stay focused on the priority work of advocating for our teachers, their compensation, and the budget needs of this incredible school system. And certainly, I look forward to helping our division stay on the path of our strategic plan in helping all of our students realize their full potential and the attributes of Portrait of a Graduate. Certainly, Ms. Strauss, you mentioned the incredible leadership team that is. I am so thankful to have the opportunity to work with such a dedicated and talented group of professionals, and because of that, I know I'm going to be able, because of that team, I know I'm going to be able to hit the ground running, although literally running may take me just a little bit longer, but we will hit the ground running. And certainly, and most importantly, we will work to ensure a seamless transition during the board's search for a permanent superintendent. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and congratulations. We now turn to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed here have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, approve the addition of the guidelines and application for school board recognition of outstanding student teams on samples and publications as appendices in the Strategic Governance Manual and send annual notice to staff. 4.02, adopt policy 1421, retaining consultants; policy 2601, rights and responsibilities of students; policy 2611, procedures for hearings and appeals to school board; policy 2613, student dress code; policy 2630, use and parking of private motor vehicles on school property by high school students; policy 2660, voluntary uniforms in public schools; policy 5105, authority to enter into contractual agreements; and policy 2620, students with physically aggressive or violent behavior is detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, award the contract for the chiller replacements at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Stingray welding LLC in the amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.04, award a contract for the White Oaks Elementary School renovation and additions project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Shible Construction Company in the amount of seventeen million, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.05, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I think one of our speakers tonight pointed out that maybe there was some confusion in policy 2601 by referencing internally in the policy itself says this regulation is not amended, and I think that created confusion. So I do have an objection to including that item in the consent agenda.
So you would like to pull an item off of the consent agenda?
If that's possible, I think it needs to be put to the next consent agenda with the correction, because I think the policy itself actually refers internally to the regulation, and it says this regulation has been reviewed and there are no changes. And I think that was one of our speakers said tonight, they were referring it to being the SRNR, had no changes, and I think that that does create some confusion in the policy.
So you're talking about policy 2601?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm going to ask our clerk for a ruling on that, whether at this time it can be pulled off the consent agenda. Could you turn on your microphone? Oh, you don't have a microphone. It has to be done, it has to be done before. I see.
You know, I understand that. I just, since there's an allowance for objection, I thought I would raise this point, just for the benefit, since one of our speakers tonight did raise it.
So in that case, if a board member has an objection, do we take a vote on the consent We move one item?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then I will remove that one item, and so we will, seeing no objection to the consent agenda without that one item, that consent agenda, the consent agenda is moved, and then we will take a separate vote on adopting policy 2601, Rights and Responsibilities of Students.
Point of order, Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I guess I'm not sure that I agree, because if our rules say that items, and I'm reading from what you just read, items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. So I don't think we have the option right now of removing that item. I think what may happen is just that someone objects to an objection. And what do we do if there's an objection? Do we vote? Do we have to vote? We have to vote anyway.
I think we probably need a parliamentary ruling on this.
I mean, I think we have a rule for a reason. If we just allow people...
Someone to, at the board table, pull it off.
Then we should, we should change the rule if we're not going to follow.
So, but...
The Strategic Governance Manual says that an item has to be pulled before the meeting begins.
All right, so what happens if someone objects to the consent agenda?
Then you can continue. You need a majority vote to not pass the consent agenda.
So do we vote, so do we vote on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, I think we need, we need a parliamentary ruling on how we proceed if one board member objects to the consent agenda after we have started the meeting.
May I very quickly point out, I'm not certain the reference that the individual constituent was referring to regulation. I don't see any reference to regulation. All of these speak specifically to policies.
In section two, in section two.
Which one was it?
In section two of policy 2601, it says this regulation, and I think that is creating confusion because it refers to the regulation.
Can I offer a suggestion, and I don't know if this is possible?
Well, hang on a second, Ms. Corbett Sanders. We really do need a ruling from, from how we are supposed to handle...
Madam Chair, I just consulted Robert's Rules of Order. I'm reading from the eleventh edition. This is at page 361, regarding consent calendars and consent agendas, okay? The matters listed on a consent calendar or agenda are taken up in order unless objected to, in which case they are restored to the ordinary process by which they are placed in line for consideration on the regular agenda.
So, so Mr. Wilson's objection would place it in the regular order, which means it's an action item? Is that correct?
It's new business for two weeks.
Would it be new business?
It could be placed either new business or as an action item. That's up to the chair.
I see. All right, well, then what we will do, we will make this an action item, and we will vote on it after we have approved the consent agenda. So I'm seeing no objection to any other item on the consent agenda, and so now the vote is on policy 2601, Rights and Responsibilities of Students. Mrs. Strauss.
So I have a question. I believe that the issue is, the 2601 is the policy. It is not the regulation, and I think the error and misunderstanding was someone thinking that this was actually the student rights and responsibility. This simply is a policy that says that there will be an SRNR. Am I correct? That's my understanding. So this is not an actual vote on the contents of the SRNR.
No, but it's still, it's still an action item. It can be an action item rather than a consent item.
Yes, yes, no, I know. But what I'm saying is, this is not, whether or not people thought that this was the actual vote on the contents of the SRNR, it is not.
Mrs. Hines?
It is the policy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we change section two to this policy has been reviewed and there are no changes at this time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what is your motion?
To substitute regulation with policy. This policy has been reviewed and there are no changes at this time.
I'll second that. That was the problem.
All right, all in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Okay, that's, that is unanimous, and so that motion passes. New business, the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, award the contract for the exterior visitor-side bleacher replacement at Stewart High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.02, award a contract for the South Lakes High School addition project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other to negotiate, execute, and administer on behalf of the school board a lease agreement for bus parking to serve the school division's needs in the Springfield area, including any and all related lease documentation in consultation with legal counsel for the school division and at rates within the school division's budget. 5.04, adopt the suicide prevention risk assessment. Postvention policy is detailed in the agenda item. 5.05, adopt the newly revised 2016 Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. We now turn to superintendents' matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Virginia Department of Education, again, released graduation rates for the 2016 school year, and again, our graduation rates exceed state averages. Ninety-two point three percent of students graduated on time, and almost sixty-two percent of our students obtained the advanced studies diploma. Again, we're very proud of the fact that we lead the state in these particular items. One other, another celebration is, I'm very proud to report that yet again, we've seen an increase in SAT scores for our students, which is not, not always the case across the nation. In some states, we're seeing lagging SAT scores. It's not the case here in... It's not the case here in FCPS. We again surpassed state and national averages on all areas, and our overall composite score actually increased three points. We are already very high. Our overall composite score was 1672, with last year's being 1669. Then we're also very proud of Springfield Estates Elementary School for being named an exemplary high-performing school in the National Blue Ribbon Program by the U.S. Department of Education. You all know that's a very rigorous process to be selected as a blue ribbon school. They were one of 329 schools across the nation who were named to the program for this year. And Springfield Estates was recognized for its academic excellence and for closing achievement gaps among the various student groups, demonstrating that all students can achieve in classrooms. And we're going to be working with the school to schedule a celebration at that school. So I know the board members will look forward to having the opportunity to visit the school and celebrate with all the wonderful staff there. And as was pointed out earlier, our Mental Health and Wellness Conference is being held on Saturday, October 29th, at 8:00 a.m. Look forward to seeing a lot of our community there. We have over 50 diverse breakout sessions and some wonderful keynote speakers. So I think it's going to be a wonderful conference. And then finally, I just will tell you, I'm so very pleased with your appointment of Steve Lockard as the interim superintendent. He is such a wonderful leader. I've enjoyed so much working with him. He's an intelligent, thoughtful leader, and he cares, and he always wants to do the right thing. So he's a wonderful leader, and he will do a great job in working with our wonderful and very strong leadership team over these coming months as you transition and work to find a new superintendent. And I just commit to working very closely with you, with Dr. Lockard, with the leadership team, to ensure for a very smooth transition. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next on the agenda is board committee reports. I call on Ms. Hines for a report on the audit committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The audit committee, the school board audit committee, which consists of four school board members and two highly qualified citizen members, met on September 28th. And our agenda was to follow up on previous audits and get a status of current audit engagements. The audit committee also considered proposed Office of the Auditor General metrics and work plan. The next meeting of the audit committee will be on October 26th. It's the last Wednesday of every month. In Gatehouse, it is open to the public and videotaped for those who can't make it, and all of the papers related are posted online.
I call on Ms. Darnett Kofax for a report on the skip committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The full skip board met yesterday, October 5th, and we discussed how county and school staff will work together to integrate the one Fairfax resolution into their work. There will be meetings set up between county and staff to begin. Also, there's ongoing work between school and county staff as to how we can work to accommodate getting more children into our preschool programs. And there was also extensive conversation about the tiered system approach. We are working, again, on a county and school combined basis to improve school attendance here in Fairfax County. And the action plan for this tiered improvement system was, it was approved with a caveat that a small working group would be assembled to further refine the Tier One interventions. To my colleagues, the skipped group is meeting, and to the public out there, there are two school board members, myself and Ms. McLaughlin, and two county board of supervisors, and many, many organizations, the head of organizations around the county. Because we are a big group, I think it has taken some time, but there is a lot of good, solid work being done there. And it's extensive. So what I'm going to be doing is, I'm going to be asking the chair and the clerk, I will be adding the attachments from the meeting, so you guys can peruse on yourself to see, and if necessary, if there's things, of course, that would require future policy changes for this board, of course, Ms. McLaughlin and I would bring that up. But a lot of it is staff-on-staff work, it's staff-to-staff work, and it's, the things that we're doing are the things I think this board really cares about, and it's happening. It's slowly, but it's happening, and I want to be sure you have all that information out there.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is board matters. I call on Ms. Hines.
I will pass tonight.
Ms. Palchek?
I will also pass. Thank you.
Mrs. Huff?
Just a thank you to all those who came out to my office hours in the Sully District yesterday, and I look forward to being in Mount Vernon in a couple of weeks.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I just want to recognize the Ms. Hubbard from West Potomac High School, who was recognized for her leadership in the Avid program by the White House last week. So a big hand of, big applause for her. As well as, I want to thank the county staff for all of their hard work, which made the opening of the new Mount Vernon Teen Center at the original Mount Vernon High School a grand success this past Saturday. And that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to meet with the leaders of the TJ Partnership Fund this last week and just read a little bit of our vision going forward. Quote from Mike Skolnick. He says, "As we collectively envisioned when the renovation began, when the TJ renovation began, that the new facility should serve as a hub for the whole community, available to everyone in the county to inspire or expand a passion for STEM. TJ is a public resource, and we look forward, as the construction does, settles, to provide our support," in other words, the partnership fund, "our support in order to broaden the impact and reach of the programs beyond the student body." It is important now that the TJ renovation is, we've probably seen the end somewhere inside, that we return to our original vision when we began this renovation, so that we can find, seek more ways to share the facility, the resources that the school has, and the wonderful partnerships and ideas that students come up with at TJ. It is a place not just for the students who go to school every day within the walls. It is a place for all of us to partner, to learn, and to excite all of our students about STEM and research. So, thank you very much, Mark Skolnick, and we look forward to working with the partnership and again, extending the use of the wonderful resources now that are available at Thomas Jefferson. Thanks.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just briefly, in honor of Dyslexia Awareness Month, I just wanted to use as an opportunity again to express my appreciation to the tremendous advocates who helped create the Decoding Dyslexia Virginia advocacy group here in Fairfax County, who have just done a masterful job of helping to educate not only the school board, but to really communicate and work with Dr. Garza and many of her staff, and really helping Fairfax County schools understand the prevalence of dyslexia among our students and how we can continue to improve their educational success. And so it's just hats off again to Dr. Garza and your tenure here, that you really helped us move this school system in a great direction in helping those students and their families. And I know from working closely with the advocates, they very much appreciate that while we, you know, it's a journey, and we continue with a school system of our size to get it right each and every time, you've really helped set the tone from the very top. And so I know they would want me to express my appreciation, especially since we honored it here tonight.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, just a heads up, I am planning to have office hours this month. Tentatively, it's for October 26th at 10:30 a.m. at the Centerville Regional Library. So hopefully, I can see somebody there. I will be sending out an email to confirm that date and time. I also wanted to say thanks to members of our community who have come out the last several meetings and expressed continued concern about the issues surrounding the transgender issue that is bubbling through our court systems and has sort of captivated much of our country and particularly our school systems. And I am thinking that perhaps we can have a way to engage the public a little more on this issue and maybe provide some update in terms of the school board's actions, or perhaps no actions, on the implementation of regulations, because I think some of the comments that reflected tonight perhaps reflected some misunderstanding as to where we are as a school system and on the school board on the issue of gender identity. So I'm going to discuss that with some of my fellow board members and see whether or not we can bring that as a forum topic, that perhaps there's some way we can engage with the public a little more on that topic. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Thank you. As Dr. Garza had mentioned, I want to extend also my congratulations to the teachers, staff, and principal Mary Randolph at Springfield Estates Elementary School for being named by the U.S. Department of Education as a 2016 Blue Ribbon Award winner. This award is based on the school's overall academic excellence, marked progress in closing achievement gaps. Blue Ribbon schools demonstrate that all students can achieve at high levels. And as a parent of two students who attended Springfield Estates, I know that the teachers and staff have all worked hard to become this exemplary high-performance school. So congratulations, and I look forward to celebrating with you in the near future. Dr. Lockard, we are happy you have accepted this opportunity as the interim superintendent when Dr. Garza moves on, and we look forward to working with you in this role. And finally, I just want to extend my sympathy to the family and friends of Connor Wurros. I'm sending prayers for healing to the entire Hayfield community during this very difficult time.
Mr. McAlveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, Dr. Lockard. I think there is no better metaphor than you walking into a board of supervisors' meeting with your cast on and limping. So hopefully, that is not a sign of things to come this year. But we wish you the best in your recovery and for all you will do for our system.
And without this meeting is adjourned. Okay. All right, I'm going to, we're going to go into closed meeting, so I will read the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting, one to discuss and consider the performance of specific employees pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1 and 2, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding personnel matters pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7. Do I have a motion? Goodbye, Mrs. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Hines. All in favor? Raise your hand. That's unanimous. We'll now go into closed session.